I'll call the meeting of the Newport Beach City Council for October 13th, 2009 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present except for Councilmember Daigle, who has an excused absence.
Okay, do we have a closed session report from the city attorney's office?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss the matters that are reflected on your open session agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Webb, followed by the invocation by Mr. Frank Carpenter?
Please join me in the pledge to the flag of our wonderful nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please bow your heads? Dear Lord, we thank you for this fair city where we have the good fortune to live and work for its beauty, its resources, and its people. We thank you for these diligent civic leaders and ask that you'd give them wisdom, make them sensitive representatives and good stewards of all that has been entrusted to them. Thank you for these caring citizens who've come here to participate. May their voices be heard and may we be courteous and respectful to one another even when we disagree. We thank you for this great nation where we have the privilege to gather and govern as we choose. May your continued blessing be upon us as a people, as a city, and as we conduct business here tonight. Amen.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, before we get into our presentations for this evening, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Webb.
That early?
That early.
I just, tonight is a very special occasion for me. If you, on the way in, read the sign that's on the little basket that's out there, I hope you picked up a little bag of jelly beans. This is, tonight is the night I'm celebrating my 40th anniversary of service to the city of Newport Beach. I started to work for the city on May 13th, 1968. Now, that adds up not to be 40, but I worked for 33 years and several months with the Public Works Department, was very blessed to be able to do that. And then I took a year and five months off and was elected to the city council and I have really feel honored that I was able to serve the citizens. But all of that adds up to May 13th of, excuse me, October 13th of 2009 as being exactly 40 years with the city of Newport Beach. And so, please, get your bag and if anyone, anybody wants to see what I looked like, this is 1970 and I was a little, not quite as gray, but still didn't wear, well, I had striped pants on in the mayor shows up there. So, I haven't changed too much in 40 years.
Well, thank you, Councilman Webb. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. The first presentation is a certificate of appreciation to Larry Root. Larry, do you want to come up, please? Larry is retiring from the city's Building and Fire Board of Appeals. He's served this community diligently on the board since February 28th, 1983, 26 years. Is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
Wow. He is a resident of Newport Beach and his background is in, is as a construction material supplier and that's pretty amazing, 26 years. I have a plaque I'm going to bring down and give to you, Larry.
It's been a good, a good run and I hope it continues. So, I'll be back.
Our next presentation is to Ray Cohen. Ray, do you want to come up over, please? Ray is the executive director of the Newport Theater Arts Center and a board member since its inception in 1979. She's getting a, an award for, it's the American Association of Community Theater Volunteers. It's in recognition of receiving the prestigious Robert Guard Superior Volunteer Service Award and this award is presented to those who have faithfully served community theater on a volunteer basis for over 25 years. Ray is only the second recipient from California to ever receive this award. She joined the theater board in 1979 and her forte has been the business aspect of the operations as well as serving as the president for 15 years. Her involvement and success includes hiring play directors, producing, creating eye-catching brochures and programs, as well as building a tremendous rapport with season ticket holders. Newport Beach Theater Arts Center's position of respect and affection throughout the Newport Beach area is a product of vision and effort, both of which stem from Ray's unflagging commitments to its place and purpose in the community. This award, although I have it and I'm going to give it to her again, was presented to her at this season's opening show in September. So, Ray, congratulations and thank you for your commitment to our city of Newport Beach.
Thank you. Thank you and I'd like to especially thank the people in the district that I am in, which would be Norma Glover when she was on my council, Evelyn Hart, and now Mr. Rosansky. Thank you. I'd also like to thank some of the former mayors who have helped us a lot, in particular, Clarence Turner, who also happens to be my next-door neighbor, and Ruth Ellen Plummer. And these people didn't just have an honorary position, they really worked with us to get this theater program going. And now I have Laura Detwiler and Sean Levin, who are overseeing the operation and I appreciate their support. Thank you. Oh, and I've been there 31 years, not just 25, but I had to cop to being 65 years old.
Ray?
Ray, did you also used to teach piano lessons?
I did.
I think you taught one of my sons a few years back.
Cameron.
Right, and he's in the, still in the music business. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ray. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now's the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Build it and they will come. The Community Youth Center has been, in Croix-en-Dame has been remodeled and they had a week of open houses culminating with movie night in the park and they had 300 people attend. And they already have 450 new students attending classes, so it's been a very successful opening.
Councilman Webb?
I already made my announcement.
Okay. Councilman Henn?
Well, it's been three weeks since we've had a council meeting and so I have a few We had a little hiccup on the peninsula a few days ago. It was about a 30-foot by 30-foot hiccup when a, an 83-year-old 20-inch water main broke and created a sinkhole that was 30 by 30. That happened at about 1:00 in the morning. Utilities Department was out there within 15 or 20 minutes of getting the call from the police department. The police cordoned it all off. General Services was involved, fire, the whole works. And they had that, they had that leak stopped very shortly after they got out there. And then they dug their hole and they had to go scrounge around wherever they could to find the parts to replace because the main was so old, it's not standard parts anymore, those sizes. But they got that, that whole thing completely fixed, repaved, new curb within less than 48 hours, start to finish. And so, I just think that's a tremendous mark of accomplishment by the city staff and an indication of the level of dedication that our staff employs really every day and in fact all night on our behalf as residents and so on. On behalf of the first district residents especially, thanks to all those involved. George Murdock especially, who was out there, I think, almost nonstop. Beyond that, I do note that item number eight here will be for the letting of the bid for the paving of Balboa Boulevard. And it looks like we're going to get a 24 percent, this is between 22nd Street and 46th Street, is that right, Steve? And it looks like we're going to get a 24 percent savings under the engineer's estimate for that. This is the right time to do it. I'm really happy to see for the benefit of those residents a repaving of that street and there's a fairly substantial contribution of stimulus money toward that project, so it's not going to cost us as much as it might have, not nearly actually. I did want to also note that the financing was completed for Assessment District 103. This is on Balboa Peninsula, down at the point. And to the joy of those residents, the financing rate came in at 3.77 percent, which is as low as anyone can remember and a mark of the fact that this city's credit rating is excellent. And the credit rating of that Assessment District, good, thanks to the good efforts of city staff, came in at an A rating and that will save those folks money, the ones that decided to finance it through putting it on their property tax bill. So, that was a tremendously successful effort. Then, also with regard to item number four on the agenda tonight regarding fire rings, I'm certainly in favor of these additional regulations associated with fire rings. But I would also like to see an exploration by staff of the idea of perhaps eliminating fire rings.
I'm pulling that so we can discuss that.
Okay, great. Great minds think alike. And let's see, I think that's, that's all I've got.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
Well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Public Works for a somewhat easier job, which was the installation of the seven new yield signs in the port streets. Those are up. I was out looking at them and have been up for a while and I know the neighborhoods really appreciate the effort that went into that and getting those up so quickly. And then also would note that beginning on Friday, it's Restaurant Week in Newport Beach again, so October 16th through the 22nd, go out to your favorite restaurant, you're going to find some great deals and you're going to eat some great food and help your, your local restaurateur, but also enjoy some of the great resources that our community has to offer in terms of fine dining.
Thank you. I just have one brief announcement. The City Hall Environmental Impact Report is nearing the end of its public comment period. It ends two days from now, October the 15th, so anyone that wants to make comments on the City Hall EIR, you have two more days to do it. And if you need to look at it, you can go on the city's website and it's available on the city's website. So, that's October the 13th, or 15th that the comment period expires.
Mayor, I had one comment on Mr. Henn's comment on the water department. I think we're extremely lucky to have an in-house water department that has personnel that are familiar with our system and the equipment that is readily available to make sure that we can get rapid responses to any disaster that comes up. I know that I've experienced it when I was Public Works Director and Utilities Director, how rapidly they can respond and it's primarily because they've had so much experience in, in putting the system together and they're familiar with it and I would just, we're just blessed to have such a great department. Here, here.
Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 17 and item S-21 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Henn?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
No items.
Councilwoman Gardner?
We leave it all to me. Four, nine, 21. And I'd also like just a reminder that on number three, that we are going to talk about appointments at some other time on the study session for the election thing, just to remind you.
Okay. Councilman Webb?
I have none.
And I have none. Does staff have any items they want to pull?
Mr. Mayor, yes. Item number 12, that actually would be removed from the calendar entirely.
Okay.
And just a reminder for the public, item number 13 has a revised recommended action that's in the supplemental report. And then item number 14 has a revised agreement that's attached to the packet. I just wanted to make sure that your adoption was of the revised agreement. Are there any questions there?
Okay. Does anyone from the audience want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Remove the approval of the consent calendar, items 1 through 18 and S-21, pulling item four, nine, 12, and 21, removing item 12, actually.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the first item is item number seven. Councilwoman Gardner?
Number four.
I'm sorry, number four, excuse me. Can't read my own writing.
This is a firing policy update and we've had a request by the Harbor, the beaches and parks, parks, beaches, and recreation commission to address this issue. I was initially, several years ago, sort of indifferent to it, but I've been spending a great deal of time at Big Corona and the more I go down there and the more I see the messes around the fire rings and the more I go there, the other day I was down there on a Sunday and for half the beach, all you could smell was lighter fluid. There's always more glass there, they're difficult to clean and anyway, I think that we should go much farther than this and I would like to see staff bring back a proposal that we abolish them. I know that there's concern about the coastal commission, but I think that there is nothing here that would impede access, there's nothing here that improves the, the environment of the beach. I don't think it's an issue of environmental justice, so I think we can make an argument and particularly when you look at the numbers of the beaches in California that have fire rings, there are only about a dozen and we have two of them right here. So, I think we're doing more than our share and I would like to see that. I, meanwhile, we can support this, although how we'll enforce it, like so many other things, I don't know, but, so I'll move this action.
Second. I would like to also echo and support Councilwoman Gardner's comments on this and I see lots of hazard, health hazard, associated with these rings as well and so, going beyond the environmental issues. So, I support your request. If we can't eliminate them all together, can we go through a phase-out program at least where we, I don't know, cut down a third of them a year or something like that?
I don't know, I just, I think the thing that really, the tipping point for me was when they said, when the police were saying that on big weekends, they have to go down, they get calls at 4:00 in the morning because people are there two hours before the beach opens trying to reserve one. It was like, one more thing that we don't need to worry about, so I look forward to that.
You also take up quite a bit of room on the beach.
Have much more room, yeah, more access.
Okay, does anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next one is number nine, the Big Canyon Restoration Project.
Yeah, I just thought that this was worth highlighting because this seems to me a case of a well-intended, well-needed project that just has gotten totally out of hand and not as a result of any action by the city, but as a result of other agencies who don't seem to be coordinating very well themselves and seem to be a little quixotic sometimes in their demands. So, I certainly support this reexamination and this pulling back, particularly if we can accomplish the main goals that we set out to in the first place. And if we don't have the turtles, no, that's okay. So, with that said, I will support the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that. It also seems to me that somebody should have gotten them flagged for piling on, on this issue, at least one or two of the other agencies. It's really ridiculous.
Okay, does anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and the next item is supplemental item 21. It's Resolution Regarding the City of Newport Beach's Support of Specific Marine Protected Area Designations in the Marine Life Protection Act. Did you want to comment on that or let the staff start or?
I'd just soon let the staff start.
Okay. Mr. Kip?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as the mayor noted, this is a proposed resolution that would state the city's position, if that's the correct word, on various discussions going on statewide involving marine life protection areas. The resolution before you does not attempt to pick one or more of the proposed maps and for those of you who are following that process, there are three maps for the South Coast region. It doesn't attempt to pick one. It says that arguably we should, as a city, take a position protecting the resources that we've been protecting ourselves with city staff, city resources, et cetera, and that's primarily the Rocky Intertidal Zone. So, with that, I'm going to have Chris Miller from our Harbor Resources Division start the presentation.
Well, thank you for the introduction, Dave. Actually, you took the words out of my mouth and with that, I'd like to introduce, my job is easy tonight, I would like to introduce Michelle Clemente, who is our Marine Protection Education Supervisor, who's very well-versed in this topic and can try to shed some light on it because it can be complicated and, and we're going to try and simplify it for you this evening. Michelle?
Actually, Dave did a good job of what I'm about to talk about. Basically, what we are going about tonight with regards to the Marine Life Protection Act is getting the city of Newport Beach to adopt a resolution that basically says we support what we're already doing. Currently, currently, there's three maps, three proposals that are up before the Blue Ribbon Task Force, which is the kind of governing legislative body that's doing the MLPA right now. The regional stakeholder groups have developed these three maps and what we're going to do now is mold those into one map. It can be one of the three maps, it can be a combination of the three maps. But we're not talking about the maps, it's easy to get caught up in the maps. I've included the maps in this PowerPoint just to show what the different proposals that are up. You can see that Robert E. Badham and Crystal Cove State Park are included in all three, in various degrees and there are different regulations that pertain to each of these maps. But basically, what we're here asking for tonight is that council and the city of Newport Beach support in some way, shape, or form protection for Robert E. Badham and Crystal Cove. Crystal Cove is a state park and they have some autonomy that we might not have with regards to fishing game in the state and I think it would be very sad to see Robert E. Badham get tossed under the bus and not have any designation at all, so I think it's really important that we discuss this tonight and come up with some form of position that we take with regard to our Rocky Intertidal.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner?
I would have, of course, had us take a position and it would have been, wouldn't have been the one that the gentlemen out there are proposing, but I realize that in starting to do the plans, we take up the whole coast and I don't feel that I'm well enough-versed, particularly in Powell's Verdes or something, to propose that. So, my concern is, yes, we support what we're doing, we have to go beyond that, though. What we are doing at Little Corona or Robert Badham and that rocky area is not enough. We need to make that stronger. And rather than us trying to devise lines or depths or areas at this point, I think we need to say that, yes, we support what we're doing, we would like to expand our protections and rely on science, rely on the science. There's a scientific advisory team, they're not politicians, they don't have an ax to grind, they're just giving science. And advise the Blue Ribbon Committee to use the best science to create these areas. We're very much in favor, though, of supporting protections for our area.
Well, there's a blank in the, in the resolution. Did the staff have any suggestions for that or any wording or?
The staff purposely ducked on this one, in part because I think as Councilmember Gardner indicated, there, there is good science out there, but even smart people are debating the, the quality of the science and debating the perspectives of the, of the science. Arguably, if you were going to look at what is within our Rocky Intertidal Zone, in some places, some spots, it's 75 feet out and other spots, it could be 100 feet, in other spots, it's tighter than that. We also discussed a little bit potentially having a depth limit that says the Rocky Intertidal is a certain zone, up to 25 feet in depth. But when I'm learning about that, I'm learning that's not always consistent. You can have Rocky Intertidal that's farther out there in a little pocket. So, I think if, if the council was interested in adopting a resolution like this, I would propose something kind of consistent, what we have, what we have at Badham, which is, I believe, about 125 feet out. Michelle could correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, how you figured it was correct and I've also seen it put at 200 feet. One thing in regards to that is I think it's important for future enforcement needs that we're consistent with Crystal Cove, which has the underwater park. There's some representatives from state parks here that could answer any questions with regards to that, but I think that a consistent limit is helpful when you're talking to people or trying to do enforcement in that regard.
The, but the, the distance offshore for Crystal Cove is three-quarters of a mile approximately, isn't it? So, it's quite a difference between that and, and Robert E. Badham.
Currently, yes. In the three proposals, it's the same, though. The designation is the same offshore distance.
And Michelle, in that, the three proposals, is that the seven, the three-quarters of a mile?
I was thinking proposal three went farther than three-quarters of a mile.
Map one is approximately a mile, map two is approximately a half a mile, and map three is approximately three-quarters of a mile.
Split the difference, okay.
Now, is that the red zone or the blue zone?
We're only talking about the blue zone, we're only talking about Newport Beach.
It's the upper blue zone?
The upper blue zone, right.
The upper blue zone.
And map number three also includes changing the Upper Newport Bay designation from a marine conservation area to a state reserve area, which would make it 100 percent no-take zone for fishing. And I guess while I support Councilmember Gardner's view that we shouldn't go backwards on our protections, the protections that we have, I do want to register an objection to making that a no-take zone as a state reserve. I'm happy to keep it as a marine conservation area because I think there's plenty to be concerned about there, but that seems to be a pretty aggressive step forward, you know, for that area, so I'll just go on record to that extent.
I just, there may be some advantages that we talked, Dave and I talked about this, sort of jokingly, but if it's a no-take, then the fish wouldn't have to be necessarily meet eating standards and we might be able to get a relaxation. I mean, it's something, would be something to explore, a relaxation of some of the, of the standards that we have there.
I'm, I'm not following you quite, Nancy.
We're trying to meet both recreational and the ability to take things out of there and eat them. And we can't, can't take them out of there to eat them right now because they're, they have too many contaminants. They don't meet the level. But if we didn't have to meet that level, we might not have to meet some of our TMDLs to the same degree. You're laughing.
No, I'm laughing because I think we both share that wishful thought. But I think I do need to characterize it as a wishful thought.
And I would like to reiterate that this resolution that we're talking about tonight only pertains to the rocky intertidal areas and not Upper Newport Bay.
Although, Michelle, to that, we arguably, because we're talking about --
We could.
We could amend the resolution. The city attorney may hit me. But to have a section in there about Upper Newport Bay.
Correct. I just didn't study up on it.
But I do agree, that would be a big change. And I think that we should perhaps have, at least express an opinion on it.
Well, then, I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution, changing the, expressing the city's view that that should not be classified as a no-take zone, as a marine reserve area. It should stay a state marine conservation area.
Just out of curiosity, does that, with the higher designation, does that create more of an issue for things we might want to do back there, like judging or any of those other?
It's my understanding that it does not, especially in the state marine conservation area designation that does allow you to craft something that works better for the locality itself. And as Councilmember Gardner's pointing out, there are TMDLs for the Upper Bay, which are federally, federally provided to us that arguably would trump the Marine Life Protection Act and say that the sediment has to be removed. For instance, that's in a TMDL.
Let me see if I understand this right. So there's, there's a pretty commonly accepted definition of a rocky intertidal zone, but it zigzags all over the place. So we're probably better off, from an enforcement standpoint, just to have an even line of some type going along there. Is that?
Yeah. And I think, too, with how currently we butt up onto Crystal Cove, that having it continuous for the entire city limits instead of splitting it up and you go to one rock and it's 200 feet and you go to the next rock and it's 3/4 of a mile. It's hard enough to explain some of the rules to people without having that challenge.
Okay, but if that were the case, so there'd be two parallel lines to the coast. One would just be 3/4 and the other would be a different distance?
Well, what we're proposing or talking about right now is that the line would be the same all the way.
I know, but if we had two different lines, they would just, there would just be a point where they'd meet where you would
Exactly.
Use one line, then when you get past that point, you'd use the other line.
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to understand it. Okay, any other questions, the staff? Because I think there's some folks here that want to speak on this. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. Anyone that wants to address the council on this issue, please step forward and state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ken Kramer. I'm the district superintendent for California state parks, including Crystal Cove State Park. Tonight, I'd like to deliver a written letter expressing some of our comments regarding this issue and also make a few comments to the council tonight regarding that. When this MLPA process started, state parks, of course, were simply a participant. The Department of Fish and Game is the regulatory agency with the authority to implement the MLPA. Our expected outcome for this process was really focused on two outcomes. One is either some potential for increased levels of protection at Crystal Cove State Park or, at the very least, protecting the existing level of designation for marine protected area that's there today, including the Crystal Cove State Marine Conservation Area. We are most concerned about the potential of diminishing the level of protection that exists today. That's the threshold that I wanted to clearly articulate to the council tonight. And that is that we do not invite or welcome or support any scenario in which the current level of protection would be diminished further. In regards to that, the comments that are located in the Group Three comments are most consistent then with that expected outcome from state parks. We're not here to choose maps. We're not here to pick one scenario over another. But we wanted to make sure that the city council tonight does know that we are extremely concerned about the potential for the diminishing of any current level of protection at Crystal Cove State Park. So if I may, I would like to deliver the letter that further articulates that for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of us.
Any questions, Mr. Kramer?
So I did have one question.
You know, so there's one difference.
Right now, as I understand it, it's a 3/4 of a mile.
I think there's some clarification on that, and it's a little bit confusing. Crystal Cove State Park has three designations. It sometime gets mixed up a little bit. One is California state parks has a series, about 18, of what we call underwater parks. Those are simply internal designation by state parks saying, hey, the area off of our land units of the park system are important to protect. They're important to try to encourage recreation, some balance of public use with habitat protection. They have no regulatory impact. We have no jurisdiction to implement fish and game laws as a result of those California State Park underwater parks. Then there's two layers of protection that currently exist off of Crystal Cove State Park. The Irvine Coast State Marine Conservation Area and the Crystal Cove State Marine Conservation Area. So those three get changed around a little bit. The 120-foot depth line, parallel to shore, is what we designate as the underwater park. The other designations come in at 600 feet and 200 feet respectfully.
So are those the 3/4 miles from offshore?
The 120-foot depth line, I think, is the number that people are throwing around at the 3/4s. The state marine conservation area, which is the most restrictive right now, is 600 feet from the shoreline. That is not the 3/4 of a mile that's being tossed out. And I think that's where the confusion comes from.
Well, I guess I'm still confused.
Okay.
Proposal number one, I believe, is calling for 3/4 of a mile.
And that may very well be. And again, state parks is not here to say that we're picking one, two, or three. What we're saying is what exists today, which includes those levels of protection, we don't want to see diminished.
Whatever it is today, you don't want to see it diminished.
We don't want to see us go backwards.
And, but then the question is, in proposal number two, they're saying, well, look, let's just drop that back to a half a mile and make it a half a mile all the way up through Robert Badham, all the way to the jetty.
And I think that would accomplish our value of making sure we don't slip further from what we have today.
Oh, really?
There's a balance right now of recreational use, sport fishing, commercial fishing, that, you know, we can live with. We certainly anticipated that there was a possibility that there would be increased levels of protection at Crystal Cove as a result of the MLPA process. That process will unfold however it does. What we're here to say tonight is we are very concerned, as a department, that the current level of protection could actually be diminished. And that was not an expected outcome.
But the difference between a 3/4 of a mile offshore and a half a mile doesn't sound like you consider to be especially material from your perspective.
We don't have that today. We have this designation of an underwater park that has no regulatory impact at all. That's just our depth line at the 120-foot mark of saying it's important to us out there. But that doesn't carry any regulatory authority such as fish and game would have. We lease that area from state lands. We anticipate continuing that lease and managing it to the best of our extent as an underwater park. But it's up to fish and game in this MLPA process to figure out whether the protection gets increased, diminished, or stays the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council folks. My name is Norris Tap. I am part of the Regional Stakeholders Group that has been involved in this MLPA process here for the last year. And it's been a tough year, a very, very, very tough year. Council Lady Daigle is also on that group, and we've got several other members here. Some of the things I just heard, what I want to do is hopefully clarify a couple of the things that I just heard. As far as a depth is concerned, there were a grand total of seven reserves in Orange County prior to the MLPA process. One of the mandates that we were given by fish and game was to standardize them as much as possible. There were certain ones right here out of Newport. Their depth, their distance from shore as an SMCA, state marine conservation area, ranged everywhere from 200 feet to as far as 600 feet to as far as the Crystal Cove, which was based on a depth. It was impossible for them to enforce it. Enforcement was a nightmare. So that was one of the mandates that we were given in the entire process, was to standardize these as much as possible. So in proposal two, and I can't speak to proposal one and three, but in proposal two, almost since day one, we have maintained those tide pool reserves, SMCA's. We've maintained those. We have standardized those now in our proposal, with the exception of Crystal Cove. We've standardized those to 1,000 feet offshore. Depth is next to impossible for fish and game to enforce. So they didn't want depth contours. They did ask us in the last round, which we did do, and we brought it into compliance, they asked us to take Crystal Cove because of what was just stated. It is unique because it is an underwater park, and it has a lease, and there's special situations with underwater parks. We did move the boundaries. We went beyond 1,000 feet. If you'll notice on two, you'll notice that the blue streak is a lot thicker on the northern part of that reserve as opposed to the tide pool SMCA's south of Laguna there. And that's because we moved the boundaries out to coincide with the underwater lease that Crystal Cove does have. The restrictions have been standardized. They, trust me, you have not lost any protection whatsoever, which he was concerned about. We've not lost any protection. We've standardized it so that all of those SMCA, state marine conservation areas, have the same take and the same, what we call, we term in the MLPA process, level of protection. What you can take, what you can't take, method of take, commercial versus recreational. That's all been taken into consideration. And as a matter of fact, again, I don't want to, but I guess I have to promote, you know, proposal two. Because we've taken that into consideration with the two harbors here, with Newport Harbor and Dana Harbor. We know that there has to be some type of state marine reserve in Orange County. And that's why you'll see the way we've got the red part there, the red indication. That's a state marine reserve. We know that there has to be one in Orange County. We took very, very careful steps to arrange that so it was equidistant between the two so socioeconomically, the impact is lessened for both Newport and Dana Harbor. But in the meantime, to reserve or to preserve the tide pool situation since day one, our one group, our one work group there has always had these tide pool protections there. The Upper Newport Bay, we've got that established as a state marine conservation area. Again, the protections were not decreased at all, not at all. It's strictly hook-and-line fishing from shore or a boat. There's absolutely no commercial fishing allowed. And that's in conjunction with the Science Center, the recent Science Center that you just opened. We didn't want to impede on that in any way, shape, form, or fashion. So we've taken that and made that a reserve. That's from the PCH Bridge north. That's all a state marine conservation area with, again, very stringent take restrictions. So that's all included in proposal two. Again, if you're not going to, say, for instance, how I say, support a proposal, I want you to be sure that, to know that the protections were not decreased in the tidal pools.
So how far, how far out does, does your proposal go on the area north of the red area there?
The same exact area. See, that's, that's one of the things that's difficult because Crystal Cove, that's all based on Crystal Cove because of Crystal Cove's unique configuration.
So you're widening the Badham area to match Crystal Cove?
We went right back, we went to whatever Crystal Cove original
So how many, how many feet or fraction of a mile is that roughly?
That thing, that's
Does anyone know?
I don't know exactly, but
How far? Half a mile?
Half mile, okay.
It's a half mile on that. And the rest of them are all 1,000 feet. And that was the mandate from Department of Fish and Game and their feasibility, that they had to be 1,000 feet, not 200, not 600 like they are currently. But they wanted them all at 1,000 feet. But again, the Crystal Cove is bigger, goes farther out because it had to be in conjunction with the current Crystal Cove boundaries.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Good evening, council members, mayor and staff. I'm Dave Connell. I'm from Laguna Beach. I'm a longtime fisherman in both Newport and Dana Point, and all up and down the southern part of the coast, for that matter. Everything that Morris said was totally correct. But I would like you to think about the economic impact of this activity. Fish and game does a great job. They control the depth we fish at, the kind of fish we fish for, the size of the fish, and the seasons. Fish and game is doing a great job. They do not really need the help of a big bureaucracy up there in Sacramento. So I think that we need to rely on fish and game for this. They've done a good job. Fishing's been improving on a regular basis. If you talk to your captains at the various places, you'll see that. Of course, fishing is up and down every day. I've been fishing this coast for 70-plus years since I was 10 years old, and it's, every year, every day is different. So that's what makes any kind of science very difficult. The ocean changes, the currents change, everything changes continually. Now, I am for freedom because I'm a veteran, and I consider that a lot of these regulations were unnecessary with fish and game taking good care of things. But if we're to have an MPA in this area, I suggest that Plan Two is the proper one. It will minimize the economic impact, the employment impact on your areas. Some of the others do not do that. I urge you to not just support preserving fish, I urge you to support Plan A. It's been looked at by real experts, experts who live here, experts who know the coast. And they say Plan Two is the best plan. Now, also, I would ask you, as a citizen of Laguna Beach, to please support Mayor Kelly Boyd in trying to keep the coastline open. That doesn't mean the whole coastline. It doesn't mean that the blue area, the tide pools, we all love tide pools, we all love the intercoastal area, and we all want to protect it because of the heavy traffic that it gets exposed to. But out past that zone of the intertidal, there's no reason to close it. Fish and game's taking care of it. I thank you very much for your attention and time.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
I'm not very good at speaking, but I speak for
Please state your name, please.
Newport Harbor Shipyard.
Please state your name, please.
Jim Warner. I deal with about 1,100 to 1,500 clients a year that come through our shipyard. I have a dry slip facility of 220 boats that take their kids out fishing every chance they can. They need to fish along the coast. I believe that if we stick with Proposition Two, I think it's a good compromise for everyone. The amount of things that come through this harbor, I don't think you realize sometimes, of the size of the boats that come through and the economic impact to allow them to come through and going wherever they're going. I mean, there's, they have crews, they buy food, they go to dinner, they have friends that come in. Even if they're transient, they're moving through, but they're still here in Newport, and they're doing things in Newport. And that's not even relevant to the little guys, my 220 boats that we have in dry slip that are only 24, 25, 30-foot boats that the families come down, they buy ice, they buy their food, their sandwiches, and they take their kids out fishing. These are kids that are going to fish again, and they're going to continue fishing. But if we close too much, there's going to be nowhere for them to fish. We've got to leave an opening for them. Take a kid fishing. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
I'm Captain Jimmy Decker. I am the current president of the Balboa Angling Club in Newport Beach. We were formed in 1927, incorporated in 1928. We have over 750 members, and they asked me to come tonight to speak to you in strong support of Proposition Two.
Just before you go on, are you the one that had the huge halibut I saw in the paper? Was that your doc?
No, that was Mark Cernich's son. Nice fish, though. Nice fish, though. Like the gentleman before I started fishing with my grandfather in Newport Beach when I was three years old, I, I have a guide service that I run out of Newport Beach where I actually take fathers and sons out and instruct them on how to fish. I run a strictly catch-and-release business where we're letting all the fish go that we catch. It's very important to me, my children, hopefully their children, to be able to go out and fish the same waters that my grandfather took me fishing with as a child. And I would just really appreciate if you would seriously consider Proposition Two, because one and three take pretty much the whole coast away from all of us, and it would be a shame to lose that right. The city seal has albacore there on your seal. This city was pretty much brought up as a fishing city back in the early days. I remember going to the cannery with my grandfather, watching the saners come in. So, I mean, you know, this city owes a lot to its fishing heritage, and that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ray Heimster with Orange County Coast Keeper, and I'm just, I'm here to go ahead and support the resolution as written. One of the reasons that I wanted to come up and talk right now is to talk about what you're seeing on the, there's a lot of concern, obviously, about how far off the coast and that type of thing, that these different things are. To be honest, that really doesn't make a, make a whole lot of difference. There's, we were given feasibility guidelines, I'm one of the regional stakeholder group members also, so I always help design some of these. And what we were told is we should try to put them on minutes of latitude, things like that. So when you see the different, the different maps, the different widths and things like that, that's either to put something on a minute of latitude or to make it hang, get on a corner so it's not hanging, things like that. The real, the real reason that you should go ahead and support this, this resolution tonight is that Department of Fish and Game has looked at these, these little SMCA's, as they call them, and they, they, the report is coming out that they're not very protective, and that because they're small, they're below minimum size, there's actually a chance that they could be recommended for elimination. So the, there is the chance that these SMCA's, the protection, the tide pool protection that we have could go away. So what I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that these provide a whole lot of protection, pretty much, the, as you heard some people talk, a lot of the, a lot of the focus was on the Laguna area where a reserve is, there's different ideas for that. I'm not gonna propose right now that you, because this is not what you're doing, is pick up certain proposal. But I do suggest that you put, force language to make sure that you do support your continued protection that you have right now, because there is, there is the chance, you know, that that could be eliminated. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Tocchihara. I'm a regional stakeholder for the Marine Life Protection Act, along with Ray and Norris. And it's been a long process. I have something I want to read to you, and then I'll make some comments about some of the comments that were made. I'm urging the city of Newport Beach to take a position and to support Work Group Two's proposal. By not taking a stand, you risk the possibility of losing 19% profit from CPFVs, commercial fishing passenger vessels, with, with Proposal Three. This does not include revenues beyond the dock or commercial fisheries. 19% was only before the dock. What about the loss of revenues to restaurants, fuel stations, launching fees, parking fees, shipyards, boat dealers, and tackle shops? Fishing brings people and tourists to your city. Proposal One and Three will devastate not only your community, but affect businesses all over the world. Please amend your proposal to include support for Work Group Two's proposal. As far as feasibility guidelines, Work Group Two's proposal, as far as the intertidal is concerned, I was one of the designers, along with Norris, who did Newport. And the reason why that we made that ribbon thicker up there was because of the, of Crystal Cove's underwater park. We got the approval from Department of Fish and Game and from State Parks. Kevin Fleming with State Parks had approved our design. Our design is gonna be as a whole. We want you to look at it as a whole and not just your community, because it will affect These aren't gonna go away. Never has there been an MPA that was ever opened up. Once they're closed, they're closed. They say there's gonna be, five years are gonna be reassessed. They're reassessed all right, but they're still never opened. They're looked at. So yes, we do have our feasibility guidelines, and then, of course, we did design Newport Bay like Norris was saying, because I belong to Saltwater Bass Anglers. I fish catch-and-release tournaments, and we have tournaments in your bay and along your coast. We don't keep the fish, we release them. And in fact, we fish for the spotted bay bass, and we take them to the Science Center so they can study them, and then they release them. We do not want to affect, and, and as a fisherman, all of us fishermen in here are conservationists. We want to fish again. If the fish are too small, we'll let them go. California is the highest regulated fishery in the world. We do not have a depleted or overfished fishery. Norris and I had put together, I have CDs for all of you in those blue folders. There's also Work Group Two's proposal in there, and it has a narrative of our proposal. If you just read the narrative, it would give you a good idea, but also you, you have Laguna Beach in there, so you can just look at Laguna Beach if you'd like. But there's lots of information in there, and it also has information that includes the estimated annual net economic impact for CPFV fisheries. So it, it tells you a lot. So if you have any questions, we're here, we can, we can answer questions for you, and we can stay after Two if you'd like. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Roger Healy. I'm the president of the Lobster and Trap Fishermen's Association of California. I represent the commercial fishing interest out of Orange County area with these maps as well. I'm going off script tonight, because I didn't know really how this was gonna be formatted, so I apologize, I'll try to make it quick. But there's 35 commercial lobster fishermen that fish out of Dana Point, Newport Beach, and, and all three proposals are definitely gonna, all, the whole MLPA process, the lobster fishing industry commercially is gonna take the biggest hit on the chin. It's not because we're overfished or overharvested, because of the habitat that's being protected is the habitat lobsters live in, basically. So we have a 100-year legacy in Orange County of lobster fishing. We're sustainable, we're a healthy fishery, and we also have the Dory fleets, all well, as all you well know, out of Newport Beach as well. So taking aside, just looking, I mean, I think you get to taking consideration the size of this, the reserves, although they're not encompassing in the areas of Newport Beach, they do have impacts that will, that'll hurt the people, the fishermen out of Newport Beach and Dana Point, the size and the spacing of the ones in, in Proposal One and Proposal Three are such large area that they're really gonna do detriment to the lobster fishing and the commercial lobster fishermen out of Newport Beach, and do huge detriment to the, the Dory fleet out of Newport. A lot of the Dory fish, fishermen fish out of the areas of North Laguna and the South Crystal Cove area and the deep water there, and that three-mile swath that they have is gonna basically do a great deal detriment to their ability to make a living. The lobster fishery itself, if, if Proposal One went into, and, and became law, there's not a lot of lobster habitat north of Newport Beach. In fact, there's very little rock, is my, most of all, I think, believe all of you know. The 2.88 miles would be left from Newport Beach to the beginning of that closure, the beginning of that reserve, and it encompass, it, it basically would decimate the lobster fishermen out of Newport Beach. So if, if the city is gonna take a stance, sorry, I'm kinda stuttering here, but if the city's gonna take a stance, I'd, I'd really like to hope that you guys take a stance on Two. I was one of the original architects of Two, and catches a key habitat without doing, doing huge socioeconomic impacts. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just a question. You said that, did you speak to the Dory fishermen? I'm, I'm not trying to contradict you, but at one point, I took an earlier map, which I think was even larger, down to someone who was, suggested was a representative of them and said, how does this affect you? He says, it doesn't affect us at all, because we, that's not where we fish. So are these new maps different, and they are more affecting to them, or is this?
Steve Escobar is who I believe you might have spoke to. He's, I think, believed the president, the current president of the Dory Fisherman. Originally, Steve Escobar was in the FICFIN, which was a proposal, organization, conglomerate of fishing consumptive interests that were the original architects of what Proposal Two turned into. It was an external, external proposal in the process that got morphed into, into, in the process into this, this proposal, too. So in that proposal, Steve Escobar was able to weigh in and tell us exactly where the Dory fishermen would be impacted. And they fish a lot of the, the deep-water fish, the thorny heads and black cod, and a good part of that area they fish is the, kind of the deeper water canyons and off-the-shelf there, off of like North Laguna, off that, basically from Main Beach north to almost Crystal Cove is, is a good part of their fishing area, plus the adjacence of it, of, of actually being close to the Dory fleet itself and trying to harvest the fish as well as getting in there before dawn, if you've ever been down there, like the mayhem that happens before light there. So if you have any other questions, I'd love to answer them about our industry.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. I thought that the commercial lobster taking was, was permitted everywhere except in the red area, so.
That, that's, what, what my, what my point is, is that the size of, of, it, it, it's like real estate, habitat, 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 location, location, location. Lobsters don't necessarily live in every single rock. There's certain rocks that they live in better than others. We're one of the most heavily regulated areas in the entire state as far as all the conservation zones and the pre-existing closure at Hyzer's Park. The size of the one at Laguna, that, Proposal One takes a good swath of Crystal Cove from us, probably the more productive area of Crystal Cove, and closed all the way down to about Aliso Creek, I believe. And it, the size of that is, is, is huge detriment to, it just, it just takes up so much area, there's nothing left for the fishermen. 35 guys to consolidate into an area of 2.88 miles isn't, isn't realistic. If you go into Proposal Three, you take the whole city of Laguna Beach, which is from, I believe, Irvine Point all the way down to probably Monarch Beach or someplace. That, too, impacts the, your, your fishermen out of Newport fish about Aliso Creek north of Newport Harbor, and they get overlapped by the fishermen out of Dana Point that come from Dana Point. I myself fish out of Dana Point, and I fish from Newport Beach to the jetty and have for 22 years all the way down to as far down as San Onofre, but currently only fish north of the harbor to Newport, Dana Point Harbor, sorry. So I, I, if you guys are gonna take a position, I'd appreciate if you'd go for Proposal Two for our longevity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Step forward.
Good evening, mayor and council, Michael Beenan, South Laguna Civic Association. I appreciate the opportunity to bring you up to date on what's happening down in our area. As you're probably aware of, our city council voted four to one to support a citywide Laguna State Marine Reserve. Part of this is a long plan on our part in the community for the last 20 years to complement the Laguna green belt with a blue belt, and create a blue belt large enough that it would really sustain our native populations of marine life. I'm a SCUB instructor, I taught at UC Irvine, I've lived in Newport Beach and Balboa Island and various streets along the way as I was a student, so I'm pretty familiar with Newport Beach. And if you look at Proposal Three, you'll notice that what we attempted to do was pull in the boundaries as much as possible, so we still maintain citywide, but offered as much opportunity for our friends in Newport and Dana Point to have fishing areas. I think we all want the same thing ultimately, which is more fish and bigger fish. I still continue to swim and freedive in the South Laguna area, and one of the reasons why there's catch-and-release programs is that a lot of the fish that are caught are undersized, and if they were caught, they'd be illegal. We, I've had the opportunity to attend most of the workshops and the science advisory teams. I have a background in biology from UC Irvine, so I get to use those tools, and I respect science. The science advisory team recommends Proposal Three, Proposal One, and then finally Proposal Two. We understand the fisher, fishing community's interest, but we think they're short-sighted that to have a marine reserve that's a little, that's larger and citywide will give us more fish and bigger fish. And keep in mind, the science advisory team found all of these reserves to be at the minimum of preferred size, so these aren't particularly considered large enough to really maybe be viable. So we'd like the opportunity, the fishing community's had free range for 50 years, we'd like the opportunity for five years to begin the restoration process, and of course, those fish, as they get larger and bigger, will feed into the Newport Beach fisheries. Thank you very much, and if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Louise Thornton. I'm chair of the Laguna Ocean Foundation. The Laguna Ocean Foundation has, from the beginning, supported at minimum maintaining the marine protection levels that we currently have here on the southern Orange County coastline. We've also wished to maintain the existing cooperative agreement organization known as OC Impact, Orange County Marine Protected Area Committee, which exists with the cities of Dana Point, Laguna, and Newport, and also includes Laguna Ocean Foundation, the Ocean Institute, Crystal Cove Alliance, and the County of Orange. This organization alone has many benefits, and for all of this, in terms of consistency of enforcement, consistency of our educational programs, research, development, and, and activities, and it's just really made a big difference in terms of supporting all of that's been going on in, in this whole area. And it's become a model, and is becoming a model for what the MLPA process will be up and down our coast. Finally, Laguna Ocean Foundation has supported the largest possible reserve which meets the science advisory guidelines, the preferred level guidelines, and the feasibility guidelines. We feel that Proposition Three has met those guidelines per the science advisory team's But lacking, as you do, I mean, our interest is Laguna, so needless to say, it's done well for us. But we would urge you tonight to support your resolution, because it does continue the continuity that we have here in South, in Southern Orange County, and, and it, it will, I think, in the long run, benefit all of us for the future generations and, and our future grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Jan Van Der Sloot, Newport Heights. Tonight, I'm wearing the hat of the Ocean Outfall Group, which is a, a group of citizens that was formed to fight the 301h waiver in, of sewage discharge in 2002. But the other half of our mission is to restore the ocean to health and abundance, and the MLPA process is a way to do that, and we support the strongest interpretation of conservation of the plans, including I, we support your resolution tonight, too. I'm a fisherman, my son's a fisherman, and we want more fish, and we want the fish to be bigger fish. And I think that the really only way to get there is to have areas of the ocean that are off-limits to, to fishing even. Just so that in the future, we can have more fish and bigger fish. It's actually a plan for the future, and so I commend the city for doing what you have in the past, and I hope that you continue to support the conservation efforts of the MLPA process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Thompson, one of the owners of Newport Landing Sport Fishing and Davies Locker Sport Fishing. One of the things that's been ignored in all of these RSG meetings that I've been watching is that one of the, the main points of the MLPA is to not create serial depletion in the areas that are left open. And what some of these maps do is it's gonna force compaction of fishing effort into smaller and smaller areas, so something like that is really ugly, when you, when you think about all these lobster guys and all the recreational fishermen all going into these little tiny areas on either side of that that are left, so that one there is no good. I know you guys aren't here to recommend one of the three maps, you'd be really concerned with your intertidal area, so, but I'd sure like you to support Map Two, which Dana Point did last night. Their city council had their meeting last night, and they support Map Two. That's another community that has a harbor that will suffer if one of these more extreme positions are taken. So that's it. The rest of these notes here, Wendy? Group One, cross-interest support. Group Two, efficiency. Yeah, Group Three, hmm, now, I can talk about that.
Did Dana, excuse me, sir? Did Dana Point support the, the whole? Did Dana Point support the whole proposal or just the proposal in their city?
Map two.
In their city?
Map two.
Just map two?
Overall, whole thing.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comments and bring it back to council. Councilman Gardner?
I know this is a, always difficult when we talk about doing things differently. I would just point out, though, that several years ago, there were two commissions formed, one by the Pew Foundation and one by, established by President George Bush and whose, I think even his most ardent admirers would not say he was, you know, a fervent environmentalist, to look at the state of the oceans. And both commissions came back with the exact same opinions, that our oceans are in trouble, that they are overfished. And I know that there's, you know, we can manage a bit better here, but it was our whole ocean. And the more that we can protect them in the long run, the better. I mean, someone sent me something, said, "We used to have 400 boats here." Well, we used to have cannerys here, too, and what happened? We just give up and say, "Oh, we're not interested in the fish?" No, we fished them out. And there's something called shifting baselines. If someone who started fishing 30 years ago said, "Oh, well, you know, I just caught a fish this big and that whoop-de-doo." Well, my father, who was here in, you know, 1920, he could have fished off the pier and probably caught a tuna or something like that. We just see these diminishing returns because we are not letting the big fish grow. And the big fish are the ones that actually are the most productive and will be the ones that repopulate our oceans. So while I, I understand, particularly if I were in the fishing industry, I would be the most protective and want the smallest area, I still think that we're not deciding on a plan. I think that's probably wise for us, but I would ask that we support the, not just no diminution, but the strongest protections for our tidal areas as possible, our coastal rocky areas.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Well, is there a second?
Is the motion the staff's recommendation? I'll second it.
I had suggested an amendment to that motion to, to make a statement that we are not in favor of the marine reserve area in the upper Newport Bay.
I'll accept that.
I accept that, too.
Well, I would just, you know, suggest that maybe we consider the, you know, the half mile. I mean, it sounds to me like that goes beyond what we have now, and it's consistent with proposal two, and it's a stronger protection than we have now, so why not go with the half mile and make a statement?
Well, then, say at a minimum, so that we're not, if they, if they want to go beyond that in terms of looking at the overall maps, that we're not indicating that we wouldn't accept a greater level of protection there.
Well, yeah, I'd just like, I mean, there's, there's a reason behind the half mile, and it seems that it, like I said, it goes beyond what we have right now. It's a stronger level of protection that we have right now, and they're going to review it in five years anyway, and I guess if it isn't working, then they'll take it out beyond that, so why not just say half a mile?
Why not just say a minimum of a half mile?
Because I suggested a half mile and...
He doesn't want it to be a mile.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, exactly. I don't want it to be a mile. I mean, a minimum of a half mile, you know, implies that, you know, you'd be going further with it. So I think, you know, a half mile goes beyond what we have.
Well, I reject that for my motion.
Okay, well...
But I will say, be glad to add a minimum of a half mile.
Okay, well, I'll make a, I'll make an amendment to Councilman Hen's amendment, but did you get a second here, by any chance?
I said you was a part of somebody.
Okay.
We both accepted his.
Okay.
You need to make a substitute.
Okay, I'll make a substitute motion that it be a half mile through the area in the city.
Everything else is the same.
Everything else is the same, a half mile.
Who's gonna second that?
Okay, doesn't go anywhere, so take a vote on the main motion.
With Mayor Selich voting no, the motion carries.
Okay.
You're, forgive me.
Sorry, me, too. I'm clear on the upper Newport Bay as a, as a state marine conservation area. I'm not clear whether or not you gelled on, you didn't put a distance.
We didn't put a distance.
So then there's a blank. Or...
No, no, there's no...
Is that the one that carried? Okay, that's very clear, then. Thank you. A minimum of one half a mile, extending out a minimum one half mile. One half mile, sorry.
One half mile.
At a minimum of one half mile. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Councilman Hen, I know how you feel. Okay, that concludes the consent calendar. We'll now, yeah, after hour and 15 minutes, we'll now move on to oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
The Sister City Association, a week ago Sunday, had a wonderful international festival at Mariners Park, and even though it was quite windy, we had a great time and there was close to 100 people that attended. And the Sister City Association did an excellent job of putting it together. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
Yeah, a couple of things. The EDC, at their most recent meeting, if I can find my notes, of the executive committee of EDC, covered a few things by way of developments, one of which is that the Conference and Visitors Bureau is, has now officially changed its name, and it is now called Visit Newport Beach, Inc. And they'll be transitioning to that new name over the next year or so. This is consistent with their strategic plan and consistent with what they really want is what is the real point of their activity. In addition to that, Councilman Rosansky was quite involved in helping the city pursue the Barrett Jackson Luxury Auto Auction. That is, the city opportunity associated with that auction that will now be held in the fairgrounds this coming July. It's the largest generator of hotel rooms, or could be the largest generator of hotel rooms for, for the year in Newport Beach. And so we're hopeful that we'll make very strong gains in grabbing off hotel rooms.
Is that going to be the same size as the one they do over in Scottsdale?
Actually, the one in Scottsdale is huge. I think they get about 250,000 participants, so that's, that one's been going on for a long time. I, I, sorry to horn in on your...
No, it's all right.
Yes. I attended the Las Vegas show and they were expecting about, this is their second year there, and they're expecting, I think at the end, about 75,000 participants. So it's a huge, I mean, for, and that's just the second year, it's a huge turnout. I know when I checked into the hotel, the guy said, "We had 1,100 check-ins today." So, and they were going to the auction, that all the people were in things. So we're expecting, you know, big turnout here. I met Craig Garrett, or Barrett, as part of the introductions, and he was very hopeful. He said, based upon their demographics and they track all that stuff, that, you know, a lot of these people who are buying these high-end automobiles at these auctions are coming from Southern California, Newport Beach, and this area in particular. But certainly thousands travel to the auction. It could be potentially thousands of room nights. And so Gary Sherwin of the Conference of Visitors Bureau, soon to be Visit Newport Beach, Inc., attended with me, and we actually got about a two-hour tour of the whole operation. It was very, very instructive and, and hopefully we'll be in a ground floor of getting our share of that business.
We'll keep our fingers crossed. One other item of note, it was a big day for Gary Sherwin, I guess, at EDC. He did also indicate that the BCS, that Newport Beach is now the home site for the BCS teams for the Rose Bowl, as well as the media. That'll be on January the 7th, and that will also be a big generator of room nights for us. And he did note, and I wanted to add posthumously, the thanks to Gary DeSano because he was quite instrumental, I guess, along the way in helping get Newport Beach as the site for those teams and the media. That could be 1,000 or more room nights as well associated with that event. So we do have some things to look forward to, I guess, for the tourism business here in Newport Beach. Lastly, Councilman Rosansky and I are also on the, what I call, for lack of a better word, the Fourth of July Committee, which every year examines our preparations for the Fourth of July event on the peninsula and trying to find ways to make it a better regulated event. Where we have concluded that we're going to take a whole new look at that and see if we can actually turn it into a family-oriented fun day instead of a wild drinking day for a lot of people. And our vision includes perhaps one day not having to have $150,000 of extra police running around with porta-potties and Klieg lights and barricades. We consider that to be a very large goal and, but we're going to pursue it with the help of staff. And I'm glad to report that our city manager, Dave Kiff, and our chief of police are very supportive of this whole effort, as well as the city attorney's office. And so we're having good whack at that and several more meetings, I think. And hopefully we'll make some progress and come up with a good plan. Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Rosansky? Nothing, thank you. Mayor Protim Curry?
The Finance Committee had a meeting this afternoon, and I just wanted to report a couple of things pursuant to the presentation that we saw recently from General Services. We are recommending, and they're moving forward with the contracting out of street sweeping. We believe that's going to save significant funds for the city. But also, we heard a fairly detailed presentation of some ideas and projections relative to financing. And I want to give everybody at home the assurance that the city council is very serious and very sober in its approach to the fiscal situation and that we are working with Dave, who has, who has offered several significant ideas to reduce costs and to ensure that the city's fiscal stability and fiscal health is protected. And that is a job one, I think, for all of us, and the Finance Committee certainly has told Dave that he has our full support as he moves forward in these efforts.
Could I, just a clarification. That was the, the street sweeping, the test that we were, for a year or six months or whatever we decided?
It's a year, and it's going to be broadened to be more citywide instead of specific neighborhoods.
But it's, it is a test program at this point?
Well, no, I think the, it has now, staff has now recommended that, upon second thought, that they should really consider an RFP for the implementation for the full city with a phase-in over the first 12 months that will allow time to make sure it's properly evaluated and that, you know, that there are no significant problems.
All right, because there was concern expressed that this is not necessarily always the best thing to outsource, that you lose certain qualities by doing it. And I'd be very concerned if we had such a deep commitment that we couldn't pull out at some time if we found it wasn't what we needed.
The proposed RFP states a 30-day termination clause, you know, for no cause, and so...
In addition, council members, that the Finance Committee's review of it directed that it come back to you before release, if I'm remembering that correctly. So you'll have that opportunity to look at it before it goes out, and as Mr. Hen's noting, they're fairly detailed in terms of the standards.
Okay, I have nothing. Madam Clerk?
I just want to add one more thing. I mean, this, this was based upon staff recommendation. This was not a recommendation of the Finance Committee to staff, so...
Right. Public comments? Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Any public comments? Okay, seeing none. Move on. Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report.
Mayor and council members, two public hearing items before the Planning Commission last week. One was for an amendment to the North Newport Center. This was the request of the Irvine Company to incorporate the properties they own in blocks 10400 and 800 into the existing North Newport Center planned community. There were some questions about definitions in particular and some of the procedural measures that were included in there, and also questions about the intensity of development. The intent was to keep the same controls in place as exist currently. There were a couple of requests to continue this by joining property owners who said they hadn't had enough time to look at the proposal. So with that, the Planning Commission continued the item till October 22nd. It will come back to the commission at that time. I don't think there's going to be any problem with passing as amended. The second item was 531st Street. That was a conditional use permit request to allow the building to be over height for a mixed-use building. That was approved unanimously. That vacant lot, hopefully we'll have something on it before too long.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. It's receive and file, so no motion needed. Current businesses, next proposition, 1A Securitization Program, item number 19.
Mr. Mayor, Dan Matashevitz is going to try the staff report.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I can spend as little or as much time on this topic as you like. The Finance Committee is well-versed on this topic and is in support of the program. But it, you know, if you decide that there's more discussion necessary on the topic, I do have a PowerPoint at the ready. I will try to keep my comments brief and look to your lead, you know, how much more information you want.
Yeah, I don't think we need a presentation, listen. I don't see anyone up here demanding one, so...
Do you want to move right to the recommendation?
Sure.
We're, oh, okay.
Making it easy, Dan. Making it easy on you.
Very good. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of the city Prop 1A receivable from the state. Authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute and purchase, execute the purchase and sale agreement to the community statewide, wide communities development authority.
Okay, any questions for Dan? Okay, thank you. Anybody want to comment on this item?
Is it the recommended action? Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next item is item number 20, Appeals by Candidates for Original Employment. Yeah, your turn.
That must be me. Yes, as you know, the Civil Service Board is charged with addressing the issue of the civil service system and governing and dealing with the governance of our civil service ordinance. Our civil service ordinance provides for candidates to have an appellate right, and what I mean by candidates are those people who apply for original employment with the city, who pass the initial standards, in other words, file the completed application, and then engage in and pass the test. And if they are denied their position, they have an appellate right pursuant to our antiquated 1957 electorate adopted civil service ordinance. The Civil Service Board was, this was brought to the Civil Service Board's attention in November of this last year. They requested that we develop a particular, a rule to deal with it, and we have done so. We went to the Civil Service Board. That rule is presented to you. Now, the nuance that we're faced with is, is that under California law, applicants and candidates for original employment of a city within a city do not have a property right in that employment. As you know, once people pass their probationary period, individuals who are employed with the city do have a property right and thus are entitled to due process. But since candidates do not, it's somewhat unusual to provide them with an appellate right because there's no requirement under the law to do so. However, since our ordinance requires it, we came forward with a rule to flesh out that concept to the Civil Service Board. The Civil Service Board's rule that we recommended has a number of different elements to it. It's essentially intended in order to provide absolute, to provide minimal procedural process and to honor the appointing authorities' choices with respect to who they actually appoint. So what happens is this. If a candidate is denied employment, they are received, they receive notice and must file an appeal with the Human Resources Department. The same time for a candidate to file an appeal is uniform throughout the CS, the civil service system. So it's a five-day notice of appeal timeline. Then, on that notice of appeal, it comes to the Civil Service Board, if not resolved by the HR Director, for a determination as to whether, in fact, a hearing needs to be heard on the entire record. If so, then the Civil Service Board sets a hearing. The Civil Service Board then reviews the record of the actual appointment process, which is the same standard that you face in your group home situation, and they review it for abuse of discretion. So an appointing authority's decision to not appoint a candidate would be upheld by the Civil Service Board so long as the appointing authority does not abuse his or her discretion. We did this in order to, we made that recommendation so we could protect the appointing authority's right to exercise discretion and since the candidate does not have any property right under California law. So what that does is it emphasizes and promotes the exercise of discretion of the appointing authority and provides minimal process protections to satisfy our ordinance.
Did I understand correctly, and I may not have, this is something that's somewhat unique to the city of Newport Beach? We have an ordinance and it goes beyond what the state requires?
I dare say it's probably absolutely unique to the city of Newport.
Then, why don't we just change that ordinance?
Well, because it was enacted by the citizens of the city. Well, because it was enacted by the citizens of the city of Newport Beach in 1950.
Oh, it's in the charter?
Yes. No, no, it's not in the charter. It was a citizens' initiative measure.
Oh.
That can only be repealed based upon a vote of citizens.
Oh, okay.
So in order to cope with it, now, the Civil Service Board also, in taking the action and recommending this rule to you, has recommended that you take action to put on the ballot a repeal of this provision so that we can come forward and bring that, if the council so desires, bring forward for the vote of the citizens to remove that particular appellate right.
In a normal election cycle, so...
In a normal election cycle, yes.
That seems to make a lot of sense.
And to that extent, this is intended to be a stopgap measure, that should the electorate overturn that position, that provision of our civil service ordinance, then this procedure would only last so long as we were required to afford it.
Okay.
How do we get that on the ballot?
You give us instruction to come back to you with a proposal to put it on the ballot, and then I believe in some, like, May or June, we have to send that to the county recorders, the county election official.
That's as soon as we can do it?
Yes, sir. Unless you want to have a special election, and frankly, I wouldn't suggest spending that money on that. I do believe there may be a possibility we'll be putting other things on the ballot as we review the different issues that exist in the city, and it may be appropriate to be part of an overall civil service analysis. I would also point out to you, you authorized that there be a full civil service system review. That has been preliminarily conducted so far by Bruce Praet of Ferguson Praet, and Mr. Praet has some recommendations regarding the Civil Service Commission and the civil service rules that you may need to consider or wish to consider that we can bring to you in the next month or two, and it could require, if you so desire, further addressing that system on the ballot.
Can we make a motion tonight to direct you to put this item on the ballot?
Two motions would be appropriate. One is to approve the rule as recommended in the staff report, and the second would be a second motion to bring back to you a proposal to put this on the ballot.
Councilman Curry?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I think this exemplifies why we need to have some comprehensive review of the language in the charter, and there may very well be an entire list of issues that need to go to the voters for cleanup. And rather than sort of ad hoc, pick them out now, I think what we ought to do is be very deliberate about this next year as we go through the charter early in the year so that we can have some hearings and vet these issues and get some community feedback. But then I think we ought to have a charter review program that updates the charter in the November 2010 election. Let me ask this, in the 50 years that this has been on the books, has anybody ever appealed not getting hired here?
No, well, yes, actually. We had an appeal recently filed, but the truth is that this was not emphasized prior to approximately October of last year when this provision was uncovered or identified, and notice was given of the rights, and we had faced two potential appeals in that context since then. And that's the context in which we bring this forward. I would share with you, council members, as well, that there are some outright illegal things in our civil service ordinance that cannot be enforced, that we would, if we come forward with that type of commission as you're discussing, recommend elimination of.
Well, I would support Councilmember Curry's point of view here. I'd be glad to make sure that this item gets on the list for consideration, Councilmember Webb, but I, but I do think we need to have a sort of a broad-scope thought process here about all the things we ought to be thinking about. I think we have some things in our charter that aren't legal, too.
Yes, there are some issues in our charter that could stand closer scrutiny based upon changes to the law since its original adoption. Might I suggest that if you support the motion to adopt the rule as recommended by the CSB, you do that. You also give us direction to bring back issues related to the civil service ordinance for review and potentially putting on the ballot. And thirdly, if Councilmember Curry would like this, for us to bring back to study session just some presentations on issues related to the charter and potentially the formation of a commission or a committee to review these with staff.
Well, I would like that, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in December or during Christmas, but I think early in the year, we want to identify these issues and hold some hearings, get some citizen input, and also look at language that might craft or correct some of these things so that it can be pretty fully discussed in the community. And I do believe that there is a need for a comprehensive charter reform measure for the 2010 election. So however we set that up to do it, either through a citizens' charter commission who would review these before they come to the council, or simply through direct legislative action, I think we need to do that. And I would, I would move approval of the proposed recommendation tonight.
Okay. I will second it, but I would like to suggest that if we need something to the county in May, that starting in January may not be, give us enough time, that we probably should get cracking on it.
Well, yeah, I think you should go right ahead and, you know, work up the list of issues.
Well, the value, we'll get a certain date. I don't recall the exact date that we have to put, that we have to get it to the county. I know that the city clerk was kind enough to provide it to you, but I forgot it.
Oh.
And the, and we'll get this worked up and provide you a list of issues that we're concerned with and get this on your agenda as quickly as we can.
It would seem like to me that we need to get that committee actually operating first of January-ish, which means we have to make their appointments in December, if we want them to get started that soon.
I think, I think you said, though, that it doesn't have to be to the county till August, not May, right? Or...
Depends on what ballot you want to be on, correct?
It'll be on the November ballot.
If you're speaking about the general election November ballot, yeah, the August to work timeline, I will get a timeline ready and provide it to the city attorney.
Something that takes that long, just, it's going to take six months.
Yeah.
By the time you get the recommendations from the committee and then go before the Civil Service Board and then go before us again, you're going to, it's going to, that's not too short.
I agree.
You were talking about a committee of the council here.
Well, we could do that, or what other cities have done, if they form charter review commissions, so citizens have an opportunity to look at this and weigh into it, and sometimes that provides perspective that's helpful, particularly since it's going to the voters.
Well, that's, we got a, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Let's vote on that one. Well, anybody from the audience want to speak? Seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, did you want to do some follow-up to that or wait to another meeting, Councilman Curry?
Well, I would recommend the following, that the city attorney be directed to develop a list of potential deficiencies in the charter or issues that need to be addressed and updated for presentation to the, to the council. I'd also like to further recommend that the city manager agendize the potential appointment of a charter review commission so that we can discuss the structure for how we would approach charter review and bring that back for our consideration.
Would that, as far as a charter review commission or committee or whatever it is, would you be open to maybe they're, having the city manager maybe put together two or three options for us so where we have something to choose from?
Sir, absolutely.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Please vote.
Motion unanimously carries.
We have two other items, supplemental items, S-22, the general fund update.
Mr. Mayor, this is a regular update about the city's general fund and budget, and it happens to be quite timely in light of some of the attention that we've paid and others in the community have paid to some issues involving specifically our revenue projections. So, Dan Matashevitz and Dennis Dan are going to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Selich and council members. As the city manager indicated, this is a regular quarterly update of our budget information. It was directed at your council goal-setting session in January. Just to remind you, the, the goal was to focus on development and adoption of a fiscal year 9-10 budget that is balanced and which allocates the city's resources where they are most needed without adversely affecting services to the public. We came before you twice previously, on March 24th and May 12th, with analysis of our budget estimates for fiscal year 2008-9, and again on May 12th, our revenue projections for the new fiscal year 9-10. We're now giving our first update for 9-10 of the new fiscal year, and it's based upon two things that have happened recently. First, we've got preliminary unotted financial information from 2008-9, and first quarter revenue data, including 2010 assessed valuations, property tax assessed valuations, second quarter, which is ending June 30th, 2009 sales tax results, triple flip tax information, and finally, two months' worth of transient occupancy tax receipts. So let me just spend a few minutes. We've got a slide projection here. There's only about eight slides. It won't take too long to go through. But I first wanted to update you on 2008-9. Property tax receipts slightly exceeded budget estimates by $300,000. Sales tax receipts were $18.4 million, which was 1.3 million less than our revised estimate of $19.7 million that we presented to you back in June. Transient occupancy tax or TOT receipts were 1.7 million less than our estimate of 11.7 million. Net revenue decline for these three revenue sources was 2.7 less than budget estimates. Again, we're talking about fiscal year 2008, 2009. However, other revenue sources were stronger than anticipated for a net revenue decline of less than $1 million. As you recall, we were directed last year to reduce budgets, our budget projections by, our budget estimates by 2%. It was, what didn't go into effect until January, so it was really 1% for the year. Departments did better than, cut back more than we had really expected. And I just wanted to report that our original fund balance estimate for fiscal year 2008-9 was $79.1 million. We actually finished the year at about $80 million, so almost $1 million better than what we had originally projected. That's fiscal year 2008-9. That's pretty much where the good news stops. Now, for fiscal year 2009-10, with, over the last couple of weeks, I started receiving information on, I believe it was September 14th, about our triple flip numbers. I received information on September 17th about first quarter, second quarter 2009, sales tax receipts. As you can see on the board, sales tax and UTOT continue to lag. Sales tax is down 2.4 million, and we're projecting transient occupancy tax to be down 1.9 million. Property tax in lieu of sales tax is where our real concern is. We've not been notified, notified officially by the county or the state. I got these numbers from a website, from a consultant, a sales tax consultant called HDL, Interlater Delamas Associates. They have a website out there with the numbers for every city in the state. I don't know where they got the information because, again, the county has not notified the city officially that these numbers are what they're going to be, but I trust the numbers. They wouldn't be out there. Sales tax in lieu, which is called the triple flip, that's where the state takes 25% of our sales tax, diverts it to the state recovery bonds and backfills through property taxes, but it grows at the sales tax rate. The state, on this website, the state notify, is indicating that we are overpaid in fiscal year 2008-9 by 1.2 million, which they will withhold from us in this current year. In addition to the 1.2 million in sales tax, overpaying, the state will reduce sales tax in lieu by 2 million less than our original budget estimate, so the net effect of those I want to mention transient occupancy tax. We revised our estimate down from 2008-9 to approximately 10 million for the hotel years, and we're thinking that they're going to do the same in this fiscal year. We've talked to the Convention Visitors Bureau, we've talked to the hotels, and we're revising our TOT estimate down by 1.9 million. On the bright side, business license tax... Dan, let's keep going. Go one more. No, that's, that's okay. Business license taxes are up slightly. Other taxes, intergovernmental charges for services, use of money on property are being revised upward by nearly $2 million. So when you take all this into consideration, the 3.2 million in triple flip money, the $1.9 million in TOT, the $2 million in sales tax, but you add back nearly $2 million in revenues that are doing better than we had originally projected, we have a $5.8 million budget deficit in fiscal year 2009-10, and that's what we're here to report this Management responses? Go one more here. Keep going. Well, that's the wrong, I have no wonder, it's the wrong presentation. There it is.
It's looking fine.
Let's back up and keep, go back up. This is, this is the first, the second slide after the title page, and this is really summarizes what I just told you, that, and the first column up there is our original estimates for 2009-10. You'll see property tax, sales tax, property tax in lieu of sales tax, TOT, and other revenues. We had originally budgeted $150 million, $150.1 million. Our revised estimates are $144.3 million for a deficit of $5.8 million. Okay, now we can go to the next slide. We've projected a budget deficit for fiscal year 2009-10 through 2013-14. Included in our estimates, we've fully funded the facilities replacement plan as per the documents that you've approved previously. We've talked before about the increasing PERS rates in 2012, 13, and 14. That's due to the 2008-9 PERS investment losses. And included in our estimates are no MOU increases. We've assumed that expenditures would remain flat. When we talked about this at the Finance Committee meeting this afternoon, one of the comments we heard from Councilman Hen is perhaps we're being a little too optimistic, at least in the property tax estimates. We had estimated, based upon advice from our consultant, revenues up, increasing up to 5.8% in fiscal year 13-14. That may be too aggressive. So we've, we've prepared, we've revised those estimates downward to give you a range. But based upon the information that we've projected so far, as you can see, on 2010, we're projecting a budget deficit of $5.8 million. That's this number right here. In 2011, a budget deficit of $7.5 million. 2012, $5.4 million. 2013, $3.1 million.
Which was revised.
Right. And 2014 of $1,036,000. I have those revised numbers based upon the comments at the Finance Committee today. Okay. So, this number of $3.1 million would grow to 5.4.2 million, excuse me, and then this number of $1,036,000 would increase to $3.6 million. And I want to emphasize again that we didn't include any expenditure increases other than normal growth for things like step increases, things that are beyond our control, but there does not include any MOU increases or other benefit adjustments. So that's, that's the problem that we're facing. We have a structural deficit within our budget, and we think if we can solve it, we can't solve it with one-time actions. We need to solve it with making a one-time, a change to the way we're structured. Back one, one more. One more. Okay, so immediate actions taken. We've had, we have a hiring freeze instituted by the city manager. We've met with various employee organizations on September 8th to give them this news, and actually, we didn't know how bad it was going to be when we met with them on the 8th. Again, I didn't get some of this information until the following week. Department heads have been directed to begin identifying ways to reduce their operation budgets in addition to the 2% reduction that was included in the adopted budget. All staff has been asked to offer their suggestions for possible ways to reduce costs. The potential in early retirement incentive program is under review and will be discussed as a separate item on this agenda. It's the next item on your agenda. And we are identifying categories of expenses that could be reduced. Longer-term actions, staff is evaluating options for restructuring, creating new cost efficiencies. Staff is looking at all of our maintenance operation costs. We're analyzing new revenue opportunities, including parking meter rates, parking lot rates, and hours of operations, accelerated fee increases, parking pay stations, et cetera. And again, as I mentioned, we've prepared a five-year general fund forecast that's been updated with current revenue expenditure assumptions. We will continually update this forecast as part of our regular budget process for 2010. 2010 and beyond. This is the, it's very hard to read, I know, but we've passed out copies to you, not only the original spreadsheet, but with the revision we made with some of the Finance Committee's comments, and that gives our projections for the current year as well as for additional fiscal years. And that really concludes the presentation. Sorry, I got a little mixed up at the beginning with the wrong slide show up there, but I want to emphasize that we've got a $5.8 million structural problem this fiscal year that we need to resolve, and if, it will help resolve it in the future years. We cannot fix this problem with one-time fixes, we don't believe. I'd like to answer any questions at this time.
Well, I don't so much have a question as a, as a comment, that I'd like to offer my thanks to staff for really taking a proactive approach in addressing this issue. It certainly wasn't our fault that the revenue projections have not come through the way we had thought they would, and it's a function of the continuing evolvement of a really tough economic environment. And so, you know, when you look at the actual annualized run rate, it's really not 5.6, that's the problem in this fiscal year, which has less than a year to, to run. It's really more like $8 million on an annualized basis, and so that's a number, that's a solvable problem, I'm sure, and, but it's going to require lots of cooperation from everyone all along the way. And so we're looking forward to getting that done. And again, thanks to staff for taking such a proactive role in this.
What does the line here that says facilities replacement plan contributions, what does that constitute?
That is the amount that's programmed to go into our facilities replacement plan. As you recall, we, the big spreadsheet that we presented to you in the past, that contemplates replacement of certain city facilities of approximately $320 million over the next 15 years. That's the annual contribution that we need to make to that plan, what we call the level pay plan, to keep the, the plan going and never let the, always have enough money in that fund to meet the debt service requirements.
Well, isn't the, isn't the development agreement with the Irvine Company going to give us 27 million in one chunk?
Yeah, and that's all factored into that, that facilities replacement plan. We've factored in, Mayor Selich, we've factored in every development agreement that we're aware of that has been signed and approved. We, I want to make clear, we have not factored in other development agreements that have not been negotiated yet, or, you know, that, we have an idea of what some of those might be, but if they have not been approved by this body, then we have not factored them into our estimates.
Okay, so this is just reflecting the amount that goes into the, into the, into keeping the facilities replacement plan going and not, that doesn't reflect when we actually get the money from the Irvine Company?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, and you, and you didn't, we're not assuming the Santa Barbara condominiums that we're getting any money from them?
I, I think we are. I think those are in there, aren't there, Sierra? I, I believe they are, Mayor Selich, but I'll check that for you.
But that may be one to rethink because the development agreement hasn't been finalized, there's an MOU, and then since then, the project has changed hands and we haven't made any more progress.
Probably not wise to factor it in if we have.
Do you recall, Dick, if that's factored into the spreadsheet?
Yes, I believe it is. I remember the council, these numbers just reflect the general fund.
But, but for some reason, I'm, I'm thinking we did include the Santa Barbara apartments.
Dennis, I, I know we were tracking it as part of, part of one of the ones that we were looking for, but because talking to Sharon, the developer has not come forward, I, I don't believe they're included in the actual rate.
We will check it out and get back to you.
I'm correct.
Okay. Any other questions from staff? Thank you, Dennis. Anybody from the public want to comment? Okay, there's really no action required on that, that's receive and file. Item number S-23, early retirement incentive program?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a, a good, good segue, I suppose, from the previous agenda item. When we look, we, we talked about the problem just moments ago. When we look at the solutions, to, to me, as a city manager, this is a vital part of that budget solution, and that is an early retirement incentive that would be offered to eligible employees, and very briefly eligible employees are persons 50 years of age or older who have five years of service within the state public retirement system or PERS, who have three years of service at least with the city. And, and then the, the most important thing in this is that that's the eligibility, but possibly not everyone would be, who is eligible, would be granted the opportunity to take the early retirement because the only reason this saves the city money is that we would be able to not fill that position again, or fill it a different way, whether at a lower level employee, or again, potentially take three positions that were retired and, and fill them back with one or two as a result of restructuring. So in your staff report, you, you see a little bit of a summary about how this works. It's not, it's not an upgrade to a classification or a category of employees' retirement program. What it is, is a one-time offer that the employees can take in a variety of ways who are eligible, and they have to leave in this plan by January 31st of 2010. So it differs from some things you've seen before, seeing in other agencies where an entire classification of current employees have their retirements enhanced. It's, it's different from that. This is something that, that causes people to actually leave the city payroll. There are about 161 eligible positions at the city, persons at the city who are eligible for this, in other words, meet those eligibility criteria. The projections from the folks that do this kind, these kinds of programs say that about 41 people would potentially be eligible and actually leave the system. And those, the projections, if we're able to fill those in a different way or not fill them all, or that we would have first-year savings from that. So with that, you may have questions about it, how it works, or again, more about eligibility, but I'll, I'll let you ask those questions.
Councilman Rosansky?
So if you're oversubscribed here, it's, I mean, do you have a target goal of how many people you want to see take advantage of this opportunity, or, or that's developed yet?
That's a, I suppose I do have a target goal, and it's in the 40s and 50s, that still seems like a lot to me, but I, the, the key issue is where they would come from, and whether or not it's a function that we could maintain if that's a program that's important to us and fill that a different way. And in some cases with contracting out, doing that with the private sector, or just rethinking the way we've organized so that we can maintain that function and still lose those folks, that's a pretty dramatic reduction. But I'm, I'm afraid with an $8 million deficit, that we can't print money and we can't find new revenue sources that easily, that that's the kind of magnitude we need.
So if you get, say, 60 people who want to take advantage of it, at that point, you're going to pick and choose amongst them which you feel are positions that can be either eliminated or, or replaced in some other form, and then others will be denied, is that the opportunity?
That's, that's in, in effect, the way it works. However, it's not just me picking them, I will do so with good consultation with the department. It's very important that they be involved.
Well, yeah, you would just sit there by yourself, but, yeah. So that's, so basically, there's no guaranteed right to this, it's, that will be determined at some point down the road if they want to avail themselves of the opportunity, if we'll accept their offer.
That's correct, and, and that brings up a good point. You actually, if you grant us the opportunity to pursue this today, you'll see this again in, in terms of its results, and have the opportunity to sign off on that via a budget amendment, because it, it does have a cost. We're, we're in effect paying this, this benefit, which, which roughly translates into about, depending on the employee, about two years of additional service through PERS, although we're not doing this through PERS, so I have to make that caveat. But it needs to come back to you for that analysis after I've made the recommendations.
So what kind of, so the net annual savings here between salary and the cost of implementing the program is at the 1.241 million?
Yes, and that's, that is the best estimate that PARJ can give us, and remember, a couple of important caveats. One, they're assuming a certain level of replacement in that, and they're saying that 50 percent of those positions are refilled. I think that's pretty high, but I'm, I'm being optimistic of this as a tool. I, I think my goal is going to be in the 20s in terms of replacement, 20 percent, which would increase the savings. The other, go ahead, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The other thing that PARJ calculates in here, it's a very detailed calculation that reflects not just the cost of the program, so the cost of the program is in that number, but so is natural attrition. So this is an amount above and beyond what national, natural attrition would give us as well as the cost of the program.
So, and this contribution now that we would have to make is paid over five years, correct?
Typically, it's paid over five years, yes.
And so after five years, we would actually see more of a savings, assuming we didn't hire back all these people?
Exactly, provided the positions were not hired back.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, correct?
Yeah, David, just to reiterate some of the things you've said, because other cities or jurisdictions have pursued strategies that have been criticized, and I want to make sure that we're drawing a distinction for how you're proposing to do this here. First of all, nobody's, CalPERS pension is being spiked in any way, and we're not on the hook for these people for additional cost increases in the cost of their pension should CalPERS underperform in the investment markets going forward as it relates to this early retirement incentive. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yeah.
So we're, and our contribution, the cost for this is a finite amount of money that's known on the day that people decide to do this, it's not going to be subject to increasing down the line.
That's correct. It's a classic, in, in a way, a defined contribution plan, at least on our part.
Correct, and, and as people leave service, to the extent that their jobs are not filled, we can project with absolute certainty budget savings from that position, net of the contribution to induce them to retire.
That's correct.
Which, as Councilman Rosansky indicated, simply increases the further on we go, so it compounds in terms of the savings.
That's correct.
Right, so it's very important, and I think for the public to know, that this is something that will produce first-year budget savings and ongoing budget savings, to the extent that David is successful in identifying jobs that can be not refilled.
How are we going to guarantee that these jobs aren't refilled? I mean, what's to stop them from creeping back?
Well, as, as, as the council is aware, the council is the entity that adopts a budget, and in that budget is, is included a position control sheet. And I, the city manager is not allowed to bring back positions without the council's approval, so this council, future council, would be the ones in control of that.
So as part of this process, I'm assuming when you bring this list back, we're going to amend that budget control sheet, or, or not?
That is something that the Finance Committee discussed today and recommended that be done that way. I'm completely fine with bringing that to you in that manner.
Well, yeah, personally, I mean, I'm not on the Finance Committee, but I would agree with that because, I mean, what's to stop? I, I think in order for the public to, to accept this, for our residents to accept that we're paying out these extra benefits, I guess, to retiring employees, is that we do get the, the bang for our buck, I guess, so to speak, and that, that these positions are in fact eliminated, and not just kind of put on the shelf somewhere to be filled down the road.
Yes, you can actually eliminate those positions, and that's what we bring forth in that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hen?
So at the risk of further leading the witness.
That's usually my job.
Just, just to be perfectly clear, this program will not go forward unless, at the end of the day, based on the response that we get and your ability to describe a revised organizational structure, we are certain that there will be significant savings from day one forward.
That's correct, and as you'll see from the resolution, the language is in there that this only goes forward if it meets the managerial and financial goals of the city.
Right. And your confidence that we can still run the city after all the dust settles?
Correct, and it's a very important point. I, I want, Councilmember Hen, you were talking about the, what a great job the city employees did on the water main break, and they did, and I want to maintain that level of service and the level of satisfaction that the employees have, because this is still a wonderful place to work. I want this to be a wonderful place to work six months from now, too.
Now, this offer of, to the employees, it doesn't include the public safety people, police and fire?
It doesn't include anyone who is within the safety classification, that's correct. It would include people who potentially work in police and fire but are not safety personnel.
So like non-sworn police officers, or police department employees would be eligible for this?
Right.
Like a dispatcher or somebody, or?
That's right.
And is there a reason why we haven't included them?
I get myself in trouble for saying this.
Again, I'm leading the witness here, I think it's a good reason.
There are, there are many who believe respectfully that they're the public, that safety employees, sworn employees have a really good retirement program already, so why enhance that? Remember, that's a 3 percent at 50 program.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody from the audience want to speak? Seeing none, bring it back for motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion unanimously carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we adjourn to October 27th.